All right, good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty and we'll call this morning's meeting to order. Our first item is the approval of the agenda and we do have two additions. One is the, is to adopt a resolution for Clay County Local Water Management Plan and the other is the 2017 Dust Control Court.
Move to approve the agenda with the additions.
Senator.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard today on items not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Okay, move on. Approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from April eighteenth and April twenty-fifth. You had them in your packet?
Motion to approve.
One second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. Okay, our eight thirty-five item. We're going to talk about the Recorders Compliance Report and the, and it's fun, so Diane.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Would it be time before eight thirty-five to handle the first item on the addition?
Sure.
That would be great if you would.
Okay.
Then boss is here.
Okay, all right, we can do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
He's got to get back to work.
Yeah, I gotta go plant some trees.
Sorry Diane, this won't take long.
Helen.
Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning.
Okay, so you're here, this is the tenure renewal, is that correct?
Yes, the tenure update for the Clay County Local Water Management Plan.
All right, and we have a proposed resolution. Are there any highlights in there or changes that you care to talk about that would be significant?
You know, it, we, there's a process you go through to solicit comments from state and federal agencies. We take those and bring those together and assign priority concerns. The only real, I guess it's not even a significant change in the priority concerns, the third and fourth concern basically flip-flopped this time. It was erosion and flood control and they just kind of switched positions, but a lot of the same issues come up every time we go through this, so it, that was really the only change to it. So, and, you know, I don't know at this point how long this plan will actually be valid. I know the Buffalo Red is in the process of trying to, or has applied for one watershed one plan.
Yep, so that would supersede this then?
At some point that will eliminate the need for these plans is the way I understand that process. Now, the other item on that would be that the Wild Rice will also need to go through that process at some point, so until it would be kind of a messed up situation, we'll be on the one watershed one plan and the Buffalo Red and probably still on this at least until the Wild Rice is there updated.
I just want to comment that I've been at a significant number of meetings where you've been soliciting comments and it really has been a process and I know you've put a lot of time into it, so thanks for your work. This is a really, a great document to govern by, so I appreciate the work you've put in.
I'm moving to approve.
One second.
We have a motion and a second.
Jenny, is this anything that needs to review her? Have you reviewed this, or?
I just reviewed it just quickly, but no, it's pretty standard and, and it's just a renewal, so.
All right.
It looks good.
All right, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried, thank you Lynn.
Thanks Lynn.
And I think he's got, yes, the same copy, okay. All right, now we can get Diane. Good morning Diane.
Good morning.
Good morning. Did we approve the dust control also?
Not yet, not yet, that's a separate.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I wanted to do just a little background for the compliance report for Mr. Haney, Commissioner Haney and for some of the public. July of two thousand and five, the recording fees for real estate documents were nineteen dollars and fifty cents. The legislators raised the fee to forty-six dollars because some of the counties were not able to keep in compliance with their documents. They were six months old, they weren't getting the documents back. Wasn't Clay County, but we were able to, well, we got some extra fees because of that. It was to help with the Recorders with technology, so we're able to update our software and make more, use the internet more with recordings. So, the breakdown for the forty-six dollars was the county gets a straight fourteen dollars and fifty cents to use as general fund. Equipment fund is ten dollars per document, the compliance fund is eleven dollars, and then the state gets back ten dollars and fifty cents. So, since two thousand and five, we have been, Clay County has met our compliance and we've used some of the compliance funds to help with our tax system maintenance, buying the assessor software's maintenance, information systems mapping, and like I said before, the dedicated documents for this is, the fee is eleven dollars per document. And then we have an equipment fund, which is ten dollars per document, and that was what we have used for our, updating our software and then if we think that there's anything else like with the mappings, that we can help with that extra. A lot of the fees for our equipment fund goes to our maintenance, like our maintenance of our, of all of our software. We pay like twenty thousand dollars a year for our maintenance for our software so we can do our recording. And we met, the compliance committee met April twenty-fifth and we recommended the disbursements that we, I attached. And to make it simpler, we've kind of decided that I do a report and what, the report shows at the end of April is just kind of a guess, well, this is what's going to happen for the rest of the year. And I think the first time I reported to you, it looked like there was going to be a deficit and that wasn't acceptable in my world, in your world too. So, for the two thousand and eighteen, we've approved to possibly potentially spend a hundred five thousand as long as we meet compliance and proposing that a hundred five thousand will come in. And that'll leave us a balance right now, a proposal balance of fifty-nine thousand dollars. So, that's about. And I wanted to thank the public because these funds are because of people who believe in Clay County, who are landowners, whether they live in the county or not, but that's how we get our revenues. It's all documents, all real estate documents, and so we just don't know from year to year what, what it's going to be, so. Any questions?
I want to, they raised it to forty-six dollars from nineteen fifty, I think, to get it into compliance and stuff like that. Now that we're all in compliance, have we lowered again, or are we going to stay at forty-six?
Well, if the legislators decide to do it at some point, this is all run by the state, the state, the fees. Yep, it was nineteen fifty, then it was twenty, and then it was nineteen, you know, back and forth like that, but they decided on that fee and it's been like that ever since two thousand and five. If we don't use our compliance funds, there's a possibility of, you know, it going down and we're losing, but we, we share. And the compliance is supposed to be used to help with real estate, so that's why you see it's to help with the tax system maintenance, re-monumentation, we're paying for all of that. And information systems and then the assessor's software.
Well, it, it buys down some of the services that, for example, Mark offers to you guys.
Right, exactly.
And it just, it means then that we don't have to levy that in different ways to...
And if we're able to have our coroner certificates, you know, that monumentation program, we can help with that, you know, so. We're all kind of one big family.
Wayland, you're on that compliance.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, Diane does a nice job with this and it's all in, all in order and so I'd move the recommendation.
Is there a second? A second. Diane, is the, is that on a fiscal or a calendar year for the compliance funds? Does it go from January to December, or is...
January, December.
Okay, because most state stuff is...
Right, yeah, but we're doing it calendar, yeah, kind of with our regular budget.
Very good. Any other questions? All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried, thank you Diane.
Thank you.
Thanks Diane.
All right, next item is our update on our revenues and expenditures. Ryan and Laurie are here this morning.
Morning.
Good morning. All right, Brian, you have your voice back, I'm assuming you're going to start.
It was such a peaceful week.
Just was having a... Oh, you had to, you had to. Good morning, Mr. Chair and other Commissioners. Yeah, we have before you today the updated, well, revenue and expenses for two thousand and sixteen, so we did present this a few, a couple of months ago and there's been very little change in that, probably the revenue side, as you will see, have increased, but the expenditure side really has not. We discussed, I think in detail, some of, a couple of the concerns and the court administration, as you'll see, is two hundred and thirteen percent and we did give an explanation of that last time, that they had added some attorneys on it, they had increased the fees on it and things like that and, and frankly, I'll take the blame on that, it was oversight on our, or my side that didn't recognize that they were going up. I'm sure the court had had a discussion with me that those were increasing and so, and, besides that, there, there, some of it was also the testing and things that they had requested, so, and they can request on a daily basis, plus the court systems have been very, very busy this last year. So, that was kind of identified with that. Other than that, there's a few that certainly jump in excess and they're kind of, our guideline is a hundred and ten percent. Elections, you'll notice, is a hundred and forty-one percent, we explained that last time as well, too. That is in every other year, we budget the same amount every year, but we, as you know, we have an election every other year, so of course Lori spends more every other year, but it's not funds that she doesn't have, she's already placed those in that fund, so that's the same with that. You'll see the victim witness advocacy is at a hundred and forty-five percent of expenditures and that operates off of grants and things, so you'll notice on the left side, under the revenue side, they were at a hundred and sixty percent of revenue, so they must have gotten some additional revenues in to, to match those expenditures. And everything else is pretty much at a hundred percent or below. And you'll notice down in the bottom, and I know we're talking about the revenue fund at this point, you'll see that we expended ninety-seven percent of the budgeted revenue funds. The revenue side was a hundred and eight percent. Now, you'll see a one point six million dollars more, but, and Lori maybe should explain that a little bit because of interest and different things, so.
Well, what we had, remember, we, we loaned the jail building by one point two million dollars and we did that in two thousand and fifteen, so we paid that back in two thousand and sixteen. So, one point two million of that increase of the revenues over the budget is, is that repayment by the jail fund, jail building fund.
So, I guess on the revenue side, Mr. Chair, our opinion is that this, this is very close to, I mean ninety-seven percent of expenditures and that would probably be very close, like a hundred and two percent of the revenues is, is pretty darn close on the revenue side and the expenditure side. If you turn over to the backside is the Road and Bridge Fund, which again, all the figures run fairly close there on it, Social Services. We've reported many, many times on the expenditures there and the bottom line is they have had to reach into their reserves to the tune of about a million dollars. It was budgeted at about two hundred thousand dollars that we would be utilizing reserve funds, but out of home placements, we've talked about that many, many times during the year and she had to reach in for about an additional million dollars in regards to, to those and hopefully through some planning and the committee that you folks have asked for, to look for options on out of home placements and trying to contain costs that, and Rhonda does just a terrific job of doing whatever she can to cite, I should say cite, it sounds like her issue citation, but placing the use in the proper location will, I mean, she just does the best she very can to do that, so. Other than that, I guess there's really no big signals. We certainly entertain any questions on the, the revenue and expense side before we talk about the fund balances, if you have any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just have a question, Lori. The auditor revenues are lagging a little bit behind one typically, do you expect those to get to where you expect them to be?
What revenue?
One that's on the general revenue.
Yeah, that, there should have been some mortgage registration and state D tax in there. I'll have to do some double checking on that, we must have paid some out ahead of time. Because that's, that's generally the only bigger revenues we have anyways.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you can proceed.
Okay, Mr. Chair, and also we'll continue then on to the fund balance and this is hot off the press as it comes. Lori brought that up this morning and so really it's something I think for you to, I mean, it's tough to look at it one minute and have questions on it, but the general fund, again, it's certainly an increase of a million and a half or so, but we have explained that that is mostly the interest and the revenue from the interest that has increased.
Correct, there's a minimal amount of interest in there, but the big one is the one point two million dollar repayment.
And the Road and Bridge Fund, it's nice to see that stay in the positive light, but that is so unsure of when they come and when they go, the dollar, so.
That's all depending on the closeout of a project.
That's exactly right. So, the stability of that, you can't really rely on.
Even though we have to recognize the payable that goes out, we can't recognize the revenue that goes back in.
Right, right.
Makes a lot of sense. Social Services, as you'll see, it's down about a million one and we talked about that and again, Rhonda has talked about that several times. The Building Fund.
I still, you know, I, you know, I think that's, to me, that's okay. That's, that's why we have these funds, is to cover these rainy days.
Absolutely, yep.
You know, you look back to, I remember in oh seven, do you take a look at, we're down to one point five million.
Yep.
You know, so, so we're still, we're still in really good shape, you know.
But, but, Mr. Chair, you have staff that gets very nervous when we spend more than we take in, so I'm glad that you...
Well, you, you have a board that probably thinks the same thing.
Okay, okay, well, that's what I'm just saying, if you're saying it's okay that we dropped the, but we get pretty nervous, so.
I'm saying that, you know, the, the fact that, you know, Rhonda, they used a million dollars more, this was...
That's what it's for.
That's, yeah, yes.
And she can't control that.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, she can't, unfortunately, yes.
I, I agree, I think it's, it's okay to use that when there are red flags that, that happen, although it would not be wise of us to not look for ways to mitigate something that's going to continue to bleed reserves. So, I think while staff does get nervous, I think this board surely gets nervous when we have to dip into reserve continually, but, you know, if, if we don't figure out a way to mitigate those, those costs that are going to continue to bleed reserves dry, we will be in trouble.
Thank you. And the, the Building Fund, that, that's at fifty thousand dollars that you folks set aside. We were able to build a little bit of reserve there when we hit our two point three million dollar bond issue, when we did a lot of updates to our properties and now we're utilizing that to continue some updates on that. That, so we're just bringing that down to a, a fair balance, I should say, so that to me isn't, isn't really an issue because that we can, we fully control as to what updates we do make and things. Internal Service Fund, I, I think everybody understands that, that, that is money that we put aside every year from, to the different, from the different departments and, and I'll use highway as an example, I think right now we're close to, was it six hundred or is it a...
Seven hundred, I don't know, seven fifty, I think, actually, for two thousand and seventeen.
That, that budgets every year for major, major equipment. Now, some years they spend three million dollars on road graders and different things, but they build a balance in there and, and they have a, a sustainable allocation that goes into that Internal Service Fund and Lori watches that very closely, too, so it's where all of the patrol cars are purchased out of and they buy a bunch of those every year and things, so it's nice to see that fairly stable.
It's just a way of us maintaining an even keel on levy, even though the expenditures go like this, the levy stays, you know, fairly constant.
Now, Public Health, that's quite an adjustment there and Lori checked on that this morning too, so she's got a little explanation for it.
Well, in two thousand and fifteen, there was a new GASB that made us recognize our liability for PERA if PERA was to go out of business. And for Public Health, that adjustment was one point three million dollars in two thousand and fifteen. And so you can see we went from two point two million to one hundred and eighty-five thousand for their fund balance. That was entirely due to that PERA adjustment. Then you can see we went further in the hole this year, but we actually did budget to decrease their fund balance by five hundred thousand dollars, so. And there might be a few revenue adjustments that need to be made still in Public Health, just a few.
So, you're, it's basically, it's not a cash issue at all.
No, it isn't, no.
Right, it's, it's, you have to...
It's just on paper.
On paper, it's a paper liability.
Right.
And it would, the likelihood of that ever being used all at once is...
Not likely.
Yeah.
And those adjustments were only made in our Enterprise Funds.
Right.
So, Public Health, Solid Waste, Family Service Center.
Okay.
Questions? And Mr. Chair, Solid Waste, as you see, is increased in its Reserve Fund. Now, just caution on that, all of, most of these other funds are just strictly cash, but that is not the case in Solid Waste Fund. That's some valuation that's in there of, of the property and, and different things, so the cash probably hinges around fifty percent of that.
Correct.
So, just, you know, I, I know sometimes we've got some projects going on there as well and just keep in mind that the liquidity of that is not all twelve, twelve point eight million dollars of cash.
Yeah, I think Brian and Lori, I think the, you know, with this project, you know, if the, if the bond comes through with the state this year on, on that transfer station, I think we're going to have to do a more in-depth...
Right.
Look at, at that whole budget process and what, what funds have to be committed for what. I know we have some closure funds that are required by the state that you have to have and, but I think it would be for Commissioner Mojo and, and Commissioner Haney, it's, we probably haven't had a really updated discussion on that one for a while, so.
Yeah, we've got two different kinds of investments in the Solid Waste Fund.
Right.
The long-term, which, which is for closure, post-closure costs.
Right.
And then just our regular investments.
And then how that incorporates with the increased, all the increased fees that just came on, that was brought in, supposed to bring in a lot of additional revenue, so.
Right. And Family Service stays, has stayed about stable and the same with the juvenile detention that's, you could see very, very close on the, what they're taking in, what they're spending and, and very comfort zone there as well, so. Any questions on the...
I see you got estimated, when this comes official?
Not until actually the state auditors go through it, but as time goes on, these are, you know, we're fairly confident in these numbers in, in, in these funds. Not much will be adjusted at this point unless some big payable comes in. Revenues, we're pretty much done with, because we, if we get it past February, we can't recognize it anyway, so if we receive it later than that. And so if we happen to get a payable that we aren't aware of right now, which we shouldn't at this point, but on occasion that'll happen, but then we don't make them official until the state auditors come and complete our audit in July or August.
The, Lori, going back to that, the payback of the one point two million back into the fund from the jail.
Right.
Was, was that a budgeted item?
It wasn't and basically that was just to cover the negative cash balance when we were purchasing all the houses.
Okay.
Because we started doing that fairly early.
Yep, we started doing that earlier, yeah, okay.
So, that's just to cover the negative cash balance.
Okay. Okay, any questions, any more questions? Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
You, you have more?
Well, we're, we're the next item on the agenda as well.
Okay. Oh. Okay, for the law enforcement, okay, the, yeah, okay, all right, yep, let's move right into that then.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the next item is the Guaranteed Maximum Price. Now, this, I hate to say anything that, that deals with this much money as a formality, but you have approved both the, the gross maximum price for the jail and the law enforcement center and you have contractual agreements with the architectural firm and the construction management firm and what this does, it brings the two amounts into a, one document for it and I think I did copy, or I think Colleen copied you the two or three page summary on this for combining the two into one document and I do think Jenny had a chance to take a look at this as well, if I'm not mistaken, yes.
I did, yep.
So, we're recommending that you go ahead and approve this document.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Right away, issues, and then we have a, Dave, we also have a dust control on, take care of that same time, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I've got with me individual from AE2S, Dean Better, he's been working with the diversion authority and what we'd like to get permission for here is a right of entry agreement, is for five parcels in Clay County and it's basically just for doing some of the, maybe you want to go into specifics, it's the geomorphic, I think, and biotic surveys.
Correct. Yeah, these were, these studies or surveys will occur prior to the diversion construction and every other year and then they will also occur after the diversion, every other year for the first five-year period is what they're estimating and then in the out-years, they may revisit those as well. Certain trigger points will probably, you know, trigger them to go and do another survey like if the, if the diversion actually operates or if we have a heavy rainfall or, you know, things like that. So, but for right now, what we're asking for is just the right of entry, which is through December thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen and the hope is, is that in that timeframe, we'll be able to do our initial survey. There may be some survey markers that get dropped in because when they do the, when they do the geomorphic, they want to basically study the profile of the, of the river and these are all in the Red River, all five of these parcels, so they need to make sure they go back to the exact same spots and there'll be some, you know, potentially some very minor brush clearing just so they can see from one side to the other for that profile checking and then on the biotic side, they'll be doing, they'll be in the water in boats and they may, you know, do a fish counts and some other things like that and there typically is going to be a couple of people in a boat in the water and a couple of people on shore to kind of help with counts, those kinds of things, so.
My understanding of this is it's, it's an ongoing study to make sure that what is done from the project long-term does not have a negative impact on the environment and, you know, whether it's fish or even, you know...
Yeah, profile of sands, washing, yeah, those kinds of things.
Right, so that, and so it's my understanding that... Right, so that, and so it's my understanding that these things will, will go on for years after, even after the diversion would be up and running.
Correct, yep. And so initially, we're just doing for the right-of-entry-
Right.
-and then we will have a longer-term easement that we will come back for as well because they need to be recorded.
And these properties that you're requesting today are owned by Clay County, right?
That's correct. I've got a little map, I can just hold up.
I think we've, yeah, we've got-
Okay. There's one a little bit north of Georgetown, one a little bit south of Georgetown, and then there's three contiguous parcels that are right down by Briarwood, so.
One question, have the additional Clay County landowners been notified about these monitoring sites yet?
They have not.
At what point will they be aware?
I think we're kind of waiting for some of the other legal proceedings to come to a head. And so we've just approached the Clay County and the City of Morehead for right now, so. City of Morehead has it on their agenda for the next meeting as well, and they're seeking approval for this as well.
And if we're waiting for legal issues to resolve themselves, why then are we moving ahead with these parcels?
Um, well, I guess the thought was is that, that it, we wouldn't get a lot of, I guess, negative feedback and for us to go through the majority of the studies which run through the Red River, it would, we have half of them. We have the Fargo side has already been approved and we're just on the-
Right. I just, it seems like the rationale to not move forward on the other parcels is because of illegal, legal issues. So I just question why we're gonna continue on some other Minnesota properties if, if that doesn't-
Well, I think, I think there's a difference in us moving on and doing some things that are not our properties versus what is our properties. That's, I think there's a significant difference there. And if this can be helpful in determining potential impacts at which everybody is concerned about what the impacts are, we should be supporting that, so.
Correct. And if there is, you know, if they do have some, you know, some findings in the years out, profile or aquatic, I mean, they will make adjustments to the mitigation as they need to, to hopefully reduce any impacts if, if they do arise, so.
Yeah, I, because I, I agree, I don't, I don't think, you know, with the pending litigation on lands that aren't ours, I don't think we should be moving forward with those at this point in time because we've been asked not to, so.
Right, yeah, I think we're just not trying to stir the public's spot.
And from someone who lives south, in South Clay County, from what I hear, not identifying and letting landowners know what's on the horizon and having their own county move forward on the same thing with the different parcels is, is like kicking sand in their eye as well, so. I think it's gonna be received the same way either way.
Dean, do you know, is there a notification piece that we can put together? Has Fargo talked about that? Or I don't think that would be very hard to do such thing that is brought up.
Um, we have notified all the Casson and, and Richland County folks, so.
Sure.
The thing is, is that with, with the ones that haven't agreed to voluntary rights of entry in those two counties, we sought legal action, we're actually going through those right now to get the rights of entry that we need, so.
Maybe we can add to the, you know, if there's a motion to move forward on this, some sort of a notification piece, so I don't think it would be too hard to do something like that.
Well, I, you know, I, you know, going back to Commissioner Mojo's comments, is in terms of standing in the face of those other landowners, the fact of the matter is, is if we, if we were to move forward and do those things as well, which is going to be important to this project, some of those same landowners are also be the ones who are gonna turn around and say, well, you're violating state law for doing this before. So you, so it's a catch-22 that you, we can't do it until that, until we get that resolved, so we're not gonna do it.
The, you know, we're not hiding the information, I guess. It is available on the diversion website and, you know, it's a little, it's not as finite of a map as this, but I think it's on the, I mean, it, it does kind of, that's the map that's on the website, so it does kind of imply that, but I guess-
I mean, if, if, if the landowners in Southern Clay County want to know if theirs would, if their land would be subject to this study, I'm sure that they could be told, yes, at some point it will be.
Correct.
Because we know, we already know those properties that, and that's actually, this is actually somewhat dictated by the Corps of Engineers in terms of where these things go.
Correct, they have, they've selected them.
As a federal project, yeah, they select the locations as a federal project, so.
And I guess that's my point. If there are properties that have been identified and they're in a subtle map that you can kind of guess if it's by your property, then why isn't this government being clear in identifying that that's the intention? And, and I understand that it's an item of contention at this table. I get it that it's, people are gonna be upset no matter what, but what I'm trying to say is, as a government, we shouldn't just assume that residents should reach out to see if they are gonna be affected. I would appreciate us saying, this is what's been identified, you know, us coming to them instead of them having to come to us.
I mean, we can sure, uh-
I think-
-discuss an outreach if that-
Yeah, and I, I think that might be something, Commissioner Mojo, that you might want to suggest at the Land Management Committee meeting.
I believe I already have.
Okay.
So there is a public outreach on other things as well, and I know that we are waiting for the revised clomer map on that and maybe in and with connected with that, we could also reach, because some of these are outside of the, the normal diversion area, whether it be the upstream mitigation or the actual channel construction area, some of these are outlying areas, so.
I'll move to approve the right-of-entry agreement.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If all is the same thing?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dave, you still have another item here, you have the two thousand seventeen dust control.
The OHV club, two.
Pardon?
The item number two.
Oh, yeah, okay.
What does OHV stand for?
Byway vehicle.
Okay, is that like an ATV?
Yep.
Yeah, let's do that one first.
Okay. So I've been approached by the club up by the Yulin area to do some maintenance on the five-mile piece that we have up in north of Yulin. They also have the exact same agreement with Norman County, and I guess, I don't know if I really heard back from-
Yes, I've reviewed it, yep.
Okay. So basically what it is, I, I've removed all the Norman County stuff, put the Clay County stuff. They will essentially be doing work for the county through that DNR grant that we have, and we get funded back at ninety percent on this, and that would be the share that they would receive. They wouldn't receive any additional funds from the county, so I thought it was a really good deal if they're willing to do this work for us and, you know, otherwise, if there is things that would, you know, clearing or any other work, maybe some, they, they also have like a little grader blade that they pull behind tractor or something, so they blade out the trail, keep it smooth as well, so I thought it was a good deal to maybe look into this agreement with these guys and our trail would be in a little better shape and it wouldn't cost us, you know.
I got a call, there's concerns up there about the maintenance of it now, that, I mean, there must have been, there was an accident there last week.
Sounded like a tree had fallen down and it didn't sound like it was there, you know, there was, there wasn't-
No, it wasn't there a couple of days before, whatever the case was. So they would take care of that, I mean, how often do they look at this trail? I mean, I realize a tree could fall down anywhere.
Sure.
I'm not saying that you gotta go out there every day, but-
I would guess in the springtime would be a big time to get out there and to do any brushing and grading, you know, after the, the snow has been melted and the stonebills have been on there, they'd take a look at the bridge that we have. You know, do you remember last year there was some plywood or something lifted up on that? We removed that plywood and have since got a call from them and they were kind of questioning what our tents were, and we didn't really know why the plywood is on there in the first place, but obviously it's protect from the spikes on the stonebills. And they were, have done some replanking or re-putting this wood on in Norman County, so they're gonna do the same thing on our bridge, and they've got some sort of a wood that's not green treated, that lasts longer and doesn't have tendency to curl up. So anyway, we're gonna move forward with some similar type of a sheeting project, I guess, in Norman County as well. So there's several different things they're gonna do. How often they do it, I guess I'm not sure. Probably as needed, but I would guess more so in the spring and then in the fall as well, prior to stonebowl season, I think they go through and make sure all the signs are right.
Well, I think it's pretty important that we do have to do some maintenance, although we can't just leave that trail set there and not do any maintenance, I think I'd move to approve this agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If all is the same, motion carried. All right, Dave, you have, you got your bridge quote too, right?
Yeah, see, we've been working with City of Fargo, we do have an agreement on all the Red River bridges, on certain things, whether it be engineering-type things, we're currently working on a monitoring project with the City of Fargo, who's taken the lead on the Broadway Bridge. Anything maintenance-related, his, those duties have been kind of delegated to Clay County at a fifty-fifty share. We did a painting project with the City of Fargo underneath there, as well as we also did a gland replacement and some deck delamination replacement. So those projects are complete. The last and final project on the, on the concrete bridge would be to replace a pretty sizable scour hole underneath the bridge. It's on the, it's on the west side of the bridge, it's about a hundred feet east and west and in the, with the bridge about sixty feet. There's about six feet of clay or so that needs to be replaced and it kind of daylights down to the piers. You can see the piling underneath that big concrete pier that needs to be covered up and then riprap put on top. So we went out and got, as you can see, we got a few quotes on that. The low quote was from Key Contracting. Initially, we were thinking upwards of a hundred thousand dollars for this work, but when we got some more numbers, you can see it's considerably less. The county share would be half of this and the City of Fargo was receptive to it and they think we should move forward as well. The dollars would come from our maintenance account and I've been working with Ryan Friedrich and he tells me we're still sitting okay on that account even with this money coming out, and I think we had striping budget last week that we got approved, so.
Okay.
We're still, as of today, we're still okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Key Contracting.
Second. Motion in a second. Dave, the, the trees that were, that are being taken out there, were they, are they just wildly grown or were they put there?
Correct.
Were they, were they put there for the purpose of erosion control or anything?
No, I think they're all volunteer trees.
It's just brush, isn't it?
Okay, so, yeah, so it's just brush that's growing.
Yeah, the one, the trees there, you can see in the picture, that's on the south side, those are terribly problematic for this project. But there is also a bigger tree on the, on the north side of the bridge that's a volunteer tree as well, and we're gonna see if they can, we've had them trim that back, because that one starts growing out into the, you know, like a bike could actually hit it. We're gonna see if at a minimum they'll trim that one and maybe even take that one out too. Let's, these ones are six inches or less, that one there might be twelve to eighteen inches, it's a bigger tree. But we're gonna work, I'm hoping the City of Fargo's forestry department will take those out, otherwise we're gonna have to look for something, the counties will have to do it or hire it.
Okay. Let's see, did we need a motion on that? Did we did that?
Yep.
Okay, did we vote?
No.
We voted, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If all is the same, motion carried. All right, then Dave, you have the dust control.
Yeah, sorry for having agenda addition, this came through on Friday. We opened the bids in Owasana, we, as you can see from the abstract, did anybody get an abstract?
Yep.
Okay. The low bid, I guess, was Mindak Magic again. We typically have in two, two contractors do this work. There is several other companies that are, you know, one for sure that's local, I guess, and some other ones that are close by. I, I've, I guess I would just quickly recommend we go with Mindak Magic, I think they've been getting a little better at their process and been getting a little bit less complaints. They have a pretty aggressive marketing plan this year. They've solicited and sent letters out to every resident in the rural Clay County and they've put together a little sheet that would be similar to having your grass mowed or sprayed, and they're kind of selling a double application, which does make sense. Do it in the spring and do it late in the fall, would have a little better effectiveness, it costs a little more money, but as you can see, their price has been staying down nice and we, we would also utilize this price for the, I think it's around sixty thousand gallons or so that the county puts down at our own cost, so I'd move forward with Mindak Magic.
Nobody submitted magnesium chloride? Are we noticing trends to move away from that?
Yeah, I would, I, you know, I don't know, they're, they're kind of interchangeable and I don't know if it's a cost thing that maybe makes it a little more attractive in our area, but years and years ago, we would almost always use mag chloride, and I would often talk to neighboring counties and a lot of them would use calcium chloride. Some say one's more effective than the other. I know calcium chloride, I think you can put it down a little lighter, a little, you know, for one reason or another, the application rate's a little bit less, so, but you're right, that's all we've been seeing on the bids lately and maybe it's more readily available too.
And then my other comment is, so it kind of seems as though we're trying to eliminate us as the middleman when it comes to this dust control piece, right?
You know, years ago, there wasn't really anybody else that was actively soliciting this type of work. Now that there is, we talked about it a little bit at Highway Committee and I would guess maybe we'll have another conversation, but at some point, I would think we could, if we wanted to, remove ourselves from the middle person, and if they're actively being sought out by a company that that's available to them, or we can keep doing it the same way we're doing it. Right now, the, the price is the same and the contractor's the same, so this year's a little unique, there's not other options. Like Tri-City would have been the low bidder, there would have been options for the locals to use.
From, because from what I've heard from residents, they really do like that, not having to work with the county, having, you know, there will be some sort of communication that'll have to happen from Highway Department and-
Sure.
-and the company, just to give the map as to whatnot to grade, but I'll, I'll go ahead and approve the bid from Mindak Magic.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If all is the same, motion carried. Thank you, David. Next, we have an update from the Behavioral Health Committee. Rhonda and Julie are gonna-
We are just two of the many.
Yes.
So, good morning.
Hi.
We have a handout right here. It's around.
Okay. Rhonda?
Thanks, Rhonda.
Sure.
That was kind of a finger point from Julie.
You know I can talk a lot. Good morning. Okay. So, we are here just to share with you a little bit of update in terms of the jail Behavioral Health Subcommittee. The conversation today is really focusing on the service package recommendations or considerations. You know, earlier on in the formation of the committee, the conversation was around facility structure, space, that kind of stuff, so I think that's already been worked through and considered in the facility design. So the second piece is talking about service, services within the jail. So that is what we're here to talk about. And I think Julie's gonna start off by just talking a little bit about what's currently available and then we'll talk about some recommendations.
Sure. Well, currently the jail offers many programs. We offer Alcohol, Alcohol Anonymous and Narcotics Anonymous, and we do that once a week within the confines of the jail. We do many church services, we have church services coming in once or twice a week. We also offer a church service outside of our facility for workhorse inmates. We do Bible study, we have a regroup chemical health support group that comes in. We do some team challenge, we have mental health provided by Lakeland two hours a week. We have a professional who comes in and meets with our inmates. In addition to that, we do have men, which provides our medical aspect for our inmates, but they do also provide mental health via ITV. And then they also, the other thing we have recently started is the twenty-four-seven Mobile Mental Health Crisis Team, and that's funded through the State Minnesota Grant.
Okay, and some of the services that we've been talking about, and again, we're not here for any, making any formal recommendations, we're just sharing kind of some of the pieces that we've vetted through. The other thing that I had to keep reminding myself when, you know, through these meetings is, although we're talking about like an eighteen-bed behavioral health pod, the services are really available to all of the folks in the jail, it's just you have a little intensity and different structure in the behavioral health pods. So that was important for me to remember, that we're not just talking about services that was important for me to remember, that we're not just talking about services to serve eighteen inmates. So keeping that in mind. So the first piece that we've talked about was increasing the mental health professional time within the jail. As Julie indicated, currently, we have two hours of a mental health professional per week going, physically going to the jail to provide services. We would like to see that increase to two hours per day, five days a week. And currently, Lakeland Mental Health Center is the provider of that service, and it's funded in two ways, partly by the B. Cowal Mental Health Initiative. So Becker Clay Ottertail Wilken Mental Health Initiative has allocated a little over six thousand dollars to help pay for the two hours that are currently going into the jail. And then, under our outpatient contract with Lakeland, we've carved out a little bit of money to pay for the rest. So that's how it's currently being paid. So calculating that out over a year, that's about a hundred and four hours that is currently funded. If we increase that to ten hours a week, we would need an additional four hundred and sixteen hours, and we apply to cost to that based on what Lakeland's hourly cost is, so that we would have a sense of what additional funds would be needed to do that. So that is the first piece.
Can I make a comment on that? For this board's understanding, as part of the issue was, if he, Ron were to come on a Thursday for his two hours, there would be, and someone came into the jail on a Friday, would have to be there almost a full week before they would be able to see a mental health professional, right?
I think it's a move in the right direction.
Yeah, absolutely. The second piece is adding more what we call practitioner-level services. So it's not a doctor level. Currently, we have Dr. Ron Aden going to the facility. This would be more bachelor's level position that would provide services in the jail, again, to meet the behavioral health pod needs, but as well as the general population needs. And it's all kinds of things like skill development, anger issues, you know, all kinds of life assessment issues, but what's going on in their life. It can be case plan development for kind of discharge, all kinds of things that, as you can imagine, many of our inmates are facing. It's not just that incarceration, but it's all the issues that perhaps landed them there. So we look at, we've been looking at, you know, what would that position look like? Again, it's a position that's less costly than professional time, because originally, we talked about, you know, a full-time mental health professional. But we think a combination of professional mental health services as well as practitioner level would be the way to go and more cost-effective, and we could do more things. So we applied, we looked at even the four-year degree bachelor's level social work grid that is currently on the grid, for Clay County to estimate what a cost would be annually for that position at a point eight, considering ten hours of professional time and thirty-two hours point eight time for practitioner level. So that's how we came up with that cost. And down in the bottom section on page two is various bullet points that Julie and the jail staff identified as what they would want that professional and practitioner-level positions to do for the folks in the jail. Again, both the behavioral health pod as well as some of the general population. So some of those activities have to be done by a mental health professional. Some of them can be done by a practitioner. So we would vet that through, but just some idea there. The third recommendation is to increase the reintegration advanced planning position that's in the jail currently. There's a point-five position allocated to that service, and the other point-five is overcrowding. And the recommendation is that we need a full-time wrap position within the jail. So calculating that out, that would cost an additional thirty-four thousand dollars to increase that position.
Would you like me to explain a little bit more what the wrap is?
Julie, in our staffing, we knew going into this thing that once we're up and running here, that it's going to require additional staff.
Correct.
Is this one of those, is this position one of those?
No.
So this is something over and above what we were looking at in terms of the DOC required staffing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The fourth bullet is looking at adding chemical dependency treatment services within the jail setting. Consideration here could be looking at our current local providers and maybe sending out a request for proposal to see who might be willing to bring their services into the jail to offer outpatient chemical dependency treatment services for those that qualify. Again, the benefit here is if we have individuals that are incarcerated and they've been identified as needing chemical health treatment, why not start that while they're there?
So the question to that is, what discussions have we had with the courts? I don't understand this at all or know enough about it, but it seems to me if somebody is going to be sentenced to ten days in jail or whatever, wouldn't the judge then also have to be a part of saying that, are we requiring this then? Is that going to be something?
I think we're looking more as a volunteer program for inmates to better themselves while they're in custody. It's targeted for the people who are going to be there maybe thirty, sixty, ninety days. They get more benefit from a program like chemical dependency in the jail. So it's people really who are looking to better themselves, but they are not qualified for an outside program.
Well, they're going to be more successful, I understand.
Yeah, so it's more of a voluntary program in the jail for the majority of the inmates, not just a targeted population.
And the benefit, of course, with that is, you know, if they're incarcerated for, like Julie said, thirty, sixty, ninety days, and they start the program within the jail, and if it's a local provider, then those services could continue upon their release as well into the community, which is really what we're trying to create, is that continuity of services, so they're not starting all over. We already budget, in the social service budget, for chemical dependency treatment services. The consolidated chemical dependency treatment fund is made up of about fifteen percent county share, eighty-five percent state and federal funds for chemical dependency treatment. So we already budget that, so I don't know that it would require additional funds in the budget. It probably could be managed within what we already have.
And those folks who would be in the correctional facility would qualify for?
Correct. Yeah, no, there are some that would not. If they are a North Dakota inmate, you know, if they're not a Minnesota resident, then they would not qualify for the fund. So I don't know how much, you know, those would be pieces to work through. The fifth recommendation was to really increase the crisis intervention training for all of the jail staff. I did send out a brochure to share with you a little information about that, but it really is intense training for first responders, law enforcement, jail personnel, to increase their skills in working with folks who are experiencing mental health symptoms or difficulties. And we've had some trainings. We were able to submit a request for some additional funds through the Department of Human Services, which they did grant to us this year. So we're hosting one in June here in Moorhead, and then we're going to host another one in Ottertail County in the fall. And when we submit for twenty-eighteen funds for that grant, we're going to try to build that in to do another training in June, which Julie talked about would be a great time to train all the new staff coming on before the facility opens in July.
It's really difficult for us to pull staff. It's a very intensive training, and this would be an ideal time to hit quite a few new staff at that time, so.
And have it done locally here.
Yep.
Yeah. It's a pretty expensive training, pretty intense. I think it's forty hours. So we were lucky to be able to get approval for funding for that.
Excellent. And I think out of the Behavioral Health Committee, that was one of the best things that really did come out, the collaboration between your departments. Julie has identified this as something that is very valuable, and clearly, the cost is very expensive. And so Rhonda, you really facilitated a good search to find the grant opportunities, so thank you.
They've done a great job for us in the last couple of years. It hasn't cost the jail any money to send our people to CIT. They've been able to secure grant money for us, so we're very appreciative of what Rhonda and Pat have done for us.
Yes, thank you. And we would like to appreciate Derek Swenson over at the Moore Police Department. He is really into this, and he's very connected with the Minnesota CIT trainers. And we said, okay, we've got the money, and he went with it and set it up. So it was excellent. The last couple bullets are things that we want to explore more. We'd like to explore how certified peer specialists may be used in connection with the behavioral health pod at the jail. Certified behavioral health specialists or peer specialists are really individuals who have maybe experienced mental health themselves, perhaps even experienced mental health and incarceration themselves and are on a different path. There's a lot of training that goes with that, but around the state, there's, we've seen some value in having those positions to support folks that are experiencing these challenges. So we would like to explore that more. And then also, there's been some conversation, again, not just specific to the behavioral health pod, but the general population as well, about how to implement maybe employment training or trade certification-type services to those inmates that are incarcerated for extended periods of time into the jail, so that they can have, you know, build some of those skills prior to discharge back into the community. So those are some pieces that we will continue to explore. So those are some of the things. We've gone, we've also spent a little bit of time, and I think intend to pursue more, gathering some information on the Yellow Line project that Blue Earth County is doing, as well as a Hennepin County model. Some of the information that I'm learning from their projects is really initially a focus on that post-arrest, pre-booking period. So having a good mental health assessment before they're even booked into the jail to maybe even prevent that. So those are some pieces that I think are really exciting, that we want to learn from and explore as an option for our jail as well.
Definitely.
Well, this is good work. This is moving in the right direction, I think, with what we hoping to see come out of this, and that's, thank you for your efforts in leading that way, between you two and Commissioner Mojo and Gross for taking on that important challenge, so.
It's exciting for us to try some.
Yeah, you're just all smiles.
I am all smiles today.
There's somebody else, there's somebody else all smiles here this morning, and it's former Commissioner John Everett. He's just got to be tickled pink to be hearing about this, because that was one of the things that he insisted be on our new facility when he was working on this, with this, was a mental health component. And John, you should be pleased to see what's transpiring, yeah? Okay.
So our committee work will continue.
Yeah, and I, you know what, and I come back often, if you want, and give us updates on this. And obviously, Julie, and, you know, as we move into July and August, and we start talking about, your budget's going to be a big issue, a big change in eighteen, starting in, so we need to, you know.
Yeah, be prepared.
Get ready, so sooner we can discuss those, the better. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next, we have a request to approve the proclaimed deed on the Agassie Regional Trails. Steve from our county attorney's office is going to come up.
Right on time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see you. Nice to see you as well.
I hope the request mostly speaks for itself, but this is another one of the very last times we come before you, looking to clean up pieces of the Agassie Regional Trail.
I think we've all read it, but.
Yeah, Polk County identified a portion of it that is mostly in their county, a little bit in Norman County. It costs us nothing. None of the land is in our county, but they identified these later-added pieces that were not included in the dissolution of the joint powers board. So my request and my recommendation is that the board approve these two quick claim deeds, and if so, I will forward them on to the appropriate counties.
All right. Certainly think that's appropriate to do.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. I propose the same, carry it.
Thank you.
That should, hopefully, that's the end of.
Yeah, I remember sitting here about fourteen months ago saying the same thing, but each of the counties is in the best position to identify these things in their own counties, so.
Sure.
I think we got it. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, committee reports. I think this time we'll start to my left. Commissioner Gross, would you like to go first today?
Okay, Tuesday, we went to the economic development luncheon, and it's interesting to listen to all the people. How much is economic development agencies really helping? People start up, you know, and I thought that was, they had some good speakers on there, how their companies are being helped. Just, it's good to see what they're doing. It's a worthwhile organization. Yesterday, at Minnesota Rural Counties, discussion was held on some of the bills that are going on. They sort of set the, you know, the finance bills, they've all been wrapped up, you know, but they have to sit down with the governor and settle on it. So whether they're going to get passed or not, nobody knows, but they feel like the finance bills have been wrapped up, you know. Then they're talking about local roads and wetlands, you know. The governor's plan is one point five million in it, the senate's plan is seven million in, and the house plan is six million in there. To me, that's not close. So there's a lot of wrapping up to do there, you know. It's just, you know, the buffer strips, you know, that's been a big thing going on. And, you know, there's money in this new bill for enforcement of the buffer strips, but there's nothing in there for implementing them. So it's, there's a problem there, you know. I don't know how that buffer strip thing's going to go on, you know. And we discussed transportation and broadband. And last night, we went to Crown Bowl Township. You know, things are going good there, no problems that they came up with. I also went over to Gooseberry Township, and they had some few concerns. I've been working out with Dave, you know, as far as whether we will contract mowing out, or, you know. They're trying to regulate the number of gravel trucks that can travel on a road, you know, because there's a lot of gravel up there in Gooseberry Township, Highland Grove, Hagan Township, you know, so how many permits are we going to give, you know? Because every time you give a permit, there's another twenty, thirty trucks probably going out of there daily, you know. So that's a lot of trucks. And do we plan on regulating that somehow?
Part of, I had a discussion with highway, part of my concern as we've been issuing these permits at the planning commission level is that we don't have an official opinion from our highway department. And as we've permitted a considerable amount of new gravel pits over the last year, that has to weigh into the plan. You know, if you have a hundred and fifty trucks more driving on these township and gravel roads, that really does change the equation, so.
Yeah, it does.
I would really like to see that, you know, either Overbow has an opinion on the permits, but actually have a section in the application that has to be completed before it goes to the planning commission level.
Yeah, they're concerned about how many permits will the planning commissioner keep on approving? You know, it's, they just approved another one. Gulf Construction just got it out, and now they're going to plan, you know, start hauling gravel out of there, you know. It's very, it's an inconvenience for those people up there. I mean, I realize gravel stacks and all that, that's what they're mining up there is gravel, you know, that's their, but how much can you really take, put on that county thirty-three? Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you. On Tuesday, I attended the city of Moorhead Planning Commission meeting, and we recommended approval for the county campus changes. And the other thing that we recommended, or put the stamp of approval to the acquisition of the old Selon Pontiac property by the Independent School District 152 to make a bus garage, and this was really a tremendous coup for the school district to obtain this. And they got a lot of bang for the buck on that property with all the things that it already has and what they can, enough room there that they can expand in the future. And so that was a very good thing, and that's all my report.
Yes, Mojo.
Thank you. Last week, I also attended the Greater Fargo-Moore EDC Annual Meeting. I appreciate the presenters from three different entrepreneurs in the area. I think that we really strive to make our area the best place for entrepreneurs and really helps from a tax levy perspective. I, last week, had some conversations with community members, discussion for the Cascay Food Systems Advisory Commission that Commissioner Everett is also on. We're at a stage right now where we've discussed a number of blueprints and are looking for feedback as to the future blueprints that we may want to discuss. That's been a very valuable conversation to see what other communities are doing and allows allows us to have a discussion, to have in place a framework if the opportunity arises in our own jurisdiction to permit those. Last week, I also attended the JPA meeting in Dilworth where we discussed the Where Red and Appreciation of Fire and EMS officials that will be coming up, I believe, the week of the 21st. We also did a significant amount of discussion on the intergovernmental retreat planning, future topics. Right now, one major point that we'd like to discuss is the opioid crisis in our community, something that based off the presentation that Kathy McKay facilitated a week or so ago. So, the planning will continue on that, and that concludes my committee reassignments.
Commissioner Wayland.
I also was at the EDC Annual Meeting, and that's been reported on, I thought they did a nice job with that this year, and it was well attended, a lot of people there. I think they said probably more than 300 people were there, so it was, it was good. We had a meeting with Steve from Detention last week, and we're still working on what we can do for our future needs with, with the detention center, and we'll have a lot more discussions on that in the near future. And I also had Minnesota Rural Counties meeting yesterday, and I think Frank did a good job covering that. Julie Ring was there from AMC, and the one thing she asked is that there's going to be a mass mailing going out to the legislators again regarding transportation issues, and she said we should probably get that today sometime, so I would appreciate if everybody would sign onto that and send it in, so that was it for me.
Okay, I also attended the Greater Ferguson Economic Development Annual Meeting. The, I thought the three speakers there did incredibly, had incredibly good stories. I want to highlight the one that was, where the NDSU students were going into the second grade classrooms, and these were engineering students, and they were going in to second grade classes and helping them, mentoring them with math. And they started doing some studies, and they have evidence that by the time they're done, their skill levels are considerably higher, and that's remarkable. I hope that that can be, you know, expanded on from maybe doing the same type of thing with MSUM and in our Moorhead schools. I think it should be something that should even go into our Moorhead schools, it's a really good deal. It's, and then also, you know, these others two talked about their businesses and their entrepreneurships and starting businesses and how they've hiring more and more people, and whether or not those new businesses are in Fargo or they're in Moorhead, what's good about all of that is it's an opportunity for every Clay County resident to have another opportunity for a place to go to work. So, so our investment into the Greater Ferguson Economic Development is paying off and worthwhile. Then I also had, that afternoon, I was out at the transfer station, we went with the, John, the head of the MPCA, he came out and visited the transfer station out there, and we gave him a report on our new, proposed new joint project. Of course, MPCA is fully behind, and it's in the Governor's Bonding Bill to, I believe, to the tune of $7 million in there for that project, and he's, he saw what we have, and he agrees, we need something new, and they're very, they're fully supportive of that, that work going forward in that project, so. Then on Wednesday, we did meet with Steve and Brian to talk about, more about juvenile detention expansion discussions, that's ongoing, we're trying to get some more information where we can give a full report to this board very soon. Commissioner Mojo gave, talked about the Clay County Joint Powers Meeting that was held Thursday morning, I don't have any more to add to that. Later that morning, we met with the Plastic Bag Committee Group that's discussing plastic bags, and I, I think there's a work plan going out in place to really help educate the people that there's alternatives to, to plastic bags, and also that plastic bags are very recyclable and can be reused, and that they just shouldn't end up in our landfill. So, there's a lot of discussion that's going on that. We have members of the Realtors Association on our committee, and home builders are on there, they have an interest in, in making sure this, these, these things are all done in a good way, so that's moving forward. And that concludes my report, so Brian and.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. The juvenile detention meeting's already been discussed. Did have a meeting with Georgia and Enterprise. As you know, we do have several of our motor pool vehicles are now leased vehicles from Enterprise, and they have a tracking system and different things that's working out really well. Of course, they're interested in expanding that into the fleet of law enforcement fleet and, and highway vehicles, not the major equipment. So, we had about an hour discussion with a representative there, and we talked about our internal service fund and how we handle that, so I don't think we're too willing to jump forward on that just yet until we get some more details on it. I think it is an excellent opportunity for counties that don't have an internal service fund to stabilize their budgeting mechanism, and I know it's been now probably about three years since we've been working with Enterprise, and I know Commissioner Everett was the one that sat at that table and suggested that we talk with Enterprise about leasing vehicles and different things, and it's really worked out well for us, for the, for the motor pool. I think we probably lease now about eight to 10 vehicles from them, and it keeps us within our budgeted amount of, and keeps us in newer vehicles, and it really works well. Management team on Thursday, we had a second phase of an active shooter training, and it was kind of emphasized on the post-activity, and, and not to get too graphic or down to details on this, but let's face it, the, the chances of us having an active shooter in one of our buildings is very slim to none, that's, that's the law of the land, but we do know that it's happening in schools and government buildings and different things, and we have done a lot, our safety committee has been very, very active in drills and procedures, lockdown procedures. Let's hope that never have, happens, but if it does happen, it's a very, very traumatic situation for, it's happened a couple of times in the state of Minnesota, out of the 87 counties, in, in a courtroom and, and in a commissioner's room down in Morrison County here about, what, five years ago? If you remember that issue, where the perpetrator was shot dead by the service department. So, it, it does happen, and the, the issue and reason why I'm bringing it up in a little more detail, if, if we do have an incident like that, the post-stress and the post-activity that takes place after that can be really substantial. There can be employees that may not be able to come back into work into that building or that office or that location. It will become a crime scene for weeks, if not months, and then it's repair of it if it is in that situation. So, the incident may occur, and, and it may happen, only occur for 20 seconds or, or two hours, but the, the post-activity after the activity is really, really important, and that's where the commissioners come in, in the fact that what do you approve? What do you, what do you guide the, the staff through in regards to relocations if that may need to be happen? If it's a, if it's a bomb threat or if it's an active bomb, does it disable all our communication devices? Do we have to relocate to a different location? That's some things that we talked about and are talking about in regards to a post-activity of that. So, I just want you to know that the leaders are talking about that and are in the process of communicating with their staff about those issues as well. It can be very traumatic for everybody if that occurs. I did have a meeting with Nick from Construction Engineers yesterday morning in regards to understanding and talking about change orders and the process that leads up to it, the proposal requests that, that are required, and I, I would like to pass out some information, and we'll, we'll do a better job probably of keeping you folks up to date. Now, I know the committee goes through these every other week, but I just want to go over some things I. And I know the two commissioners that are on this committee have most of this information, but. Being a paper factory here today.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Now, what you have before you is our four documents, and they do kind of all tie together, and we're, I mean, construction has begun on both buildings, and we have gone over these now a couple of times at the construction meeting, but we promised to keep you informed, and we've promised to bring all change orders to this board. This board has authorized the two commissioners that sit on this committee, Commissioner Wayland and Campbell, to approve up to $25,000, but that does not alleviate the responsibility to bring it to the full board for review and then approval. So, what you have before you is the first one that, that has a list of things that says "Construction Engineers" on it, and there's some highlighted yellow items on there, and you'll see off to the side, it says PR 01, and for example, the first one says R. That is a proposal request, that's not a change order form yet, but it's a proposal request, and using the first one, for example, it says Minnesota DOC Guidelines, and I also handed out a document that's from Nick on top of it, and it has all of the explanations starting down near the bottom, it says PR number 01 Revision for Minnesota DOC. And what it does in there, it kind of goes over why the proposal request is being sought, and as an example of that one, after the drawings had gone to the Department of Corrections, they had reviewed those, and they came back and wanted some modifications to something. So, therefore, it, and I guess if, if I was you or a layperson, I would say, well, you designed it, and it met standards, so why is there a change already coming? Well, there might be a door swing modification, there might be a width change, there might be something, some small thing that has occurred after the, the design have been approved, and that's why they've come back and then submitted a proposal request for review. So, I give you that as just an example. I won't go into every one of them unless you have questions about it, but you will see a utility relocation, a padded cell revision, which is a credit of $23,000. That was our staff feeling that the requirements that were changed by DOC, then there was a determination that that cell revision was not needed, because there's a $23,000 credit on that. A fire alarm announcator panel was, the, the design met the State Fire Inspector Code, but then when it was reviewed by a local fire marshal, they wanted an additional announcator. So, that is being looked at as needing to be installed. The big one there, the PR 06, revised sidewalk and light poles at the northeast parking lot. During the construction committee meeting, it was determined that the lighting for that and the cameras of that parking lot and things should be a function of the jail, and now that is being switched over financially, and it never had been designed or quoted within the parking lot structure. So, that will be a sizable adjustment, and they're getting pricing on that, so I just want you to be aware of that. And then there's some minor other things. The, the big one, the PR 14, is the removal of the video visitation system. I don't know if that had been addressed yet to the full board, but that was designed in the system to have the video visitation. What Julie plans to do now though is the vendor is going to install that equipment, and then it'll be paid for out of the profits from the commissary fund on a, on a monthly basis, over a yearly basis, and they can keep updating the equipment. So, now that has been taken out of the cost for the county, so that is a credit of $105,000, which is sizable, but the, the equipment is still going in. And the, the big one that you have approved that we brought in was the $41,994 on the fuel tank remover, removal. That has already taken place, you've already approved that, but then, then there's some contaminated soils and things that had to be removed, that was reviewed at the committee. It's been reviewed by our two commissioners and approved on up to that $25,000 mark or that range, because if it's $25,000 and one cent or $15, we said the range of 25,000, that's what you approved. Now, these will be formally put into a document and be brought back to the board for your final consideration, but I think we'll do this every time we get an update on these change things, bring it to you folks for your information. So, we're not asking for action today, just for information on that. And again, the document that I supplied that says Nick on top of it is the justification for all of those proposed changes that are, are in process right now. The other thing that we had a, any, any questions on that?
Yeah, before we go.
Okay, sure.
Brian, I, where I was a little bit confused on this is, is we're, we're showing all of the, all of the changes that are to the county's advantage are in parentheses, they're, in other words, they're a reduction to.
Yes.
And then the, the ones that are not in parentheses, of course, are increased costs.
That's correct.
What, what's confusing to that is then they threw in red numbers.
Yes.
And red numbers, to me, are kind of like, you would normally think they're like the parentheses numbers.
Right, that's right.
You know, and that's what I was trying to get at that morning when I was talking to them, that, that makes it confusing, because in each of these cases, they're increased costs, so they should be just like all the other ones listed, just in black.
Yes, they should be, yeah.
But I, I think maybe for clarification for that, maybe Nick needs some further clarification, but I think that, that makes it confusing.
And, Mr. Chair, I, I'm, you just said that was one thing, a little infusion. When I sat through the meeting on Monday, of course, I couldn't speak at that time, and so I didn't get into a dialogue with them, but we talked for about an hour and a half on this, on Monday morning, because I didn't think all of these were clear, it wasn't clear to me, so, and I've been involved in it heavily, so I thought that a good discussion as to the process and the procedure would need to be talked about, and, and it really helped clear things up for me. And then we even talked about, any more questions on?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
On, on the $11,373 cost for. On, on the eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollar cost for the removal of that contaminated soil, it's my understanding that we're looking at about a hundred cubic yards of contaminated soil?
I'm not sure the amount.
I think I, I thought I read...
That says contam, that says a hundred.
Yeah, I read somewhere that it was, that it seems, and it seems to me that the destination of that was going to be our Clay County landfill. And I'm just wondering, how does it get so expensive to remove a hundred cubic yards of, of something and cost eleven thousand dollars? I, I just, I'm, it's one thing, it's one thing if you have to remember the days when, when we, when they were doing cleanup things for, for example, First Avenue North when they'd contaminated soils and you'd brought them out and they'd put them into farm fields where they would till them up and go through that process. That was expensive because there was an expense going through that process that made it expensive. Because we're going to take it out to the landfill and possibly use it for, for daily cover, I, I'm just wondering, how does it get to be so expensive for hundreds?
And, Mr. Chair, the eleven, we did talk about that amount, and he said he didn't think it was going to be that high. That was just an estimate on their part personally, so this is fairly early on, and they should be getting to the price pretty soon on this, so, yeah, I, I guess I can certainly discuss...
Well, that would also, I would, I would assume that's including a bill from our...
Landfill?
Landfill.
Oh, certainly.
So we should kind of see what that is, too.
Yeah.
We're just paying ourselves.
Right, yep, yep, yep.
All right, you can go on.
I have one question on the parking lot lighting. Are we saying that that lighting wasn't part of the whole thing? Didn't we have any plans to put any lights up there, or is this some, some I don't quite understand, number six?
Yeah, that, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, that is a very good question, because I asked the same question. In fact, I just got a response on that this morning, because I, I was, I was certain of my answer, but I wasn't absolutely positive. So I did get a response from Mike Love, who is the engineer that we, that designed the parking lot over there. They did plan to design that for lighting, but in committee, we felt that that was a cost associated with the jail. And there's reasons for it to be in the jail bonding. It's cheaper money for one thing, and, and some other things that go along with the sales tax applies on this and things. So, we, we evaluated that it was better to attach it to the jail, so it was not included in the design. Plus, the video cameras had not been talked about at that time, whether we should video that parking lot or not. And we felt that around the law enforcement center and into the future, that videos surveillance on these parking lots is very important. And so, that's what they're working on at this time. In fact, they do not have that designed yet. So, no, it was not bid with lighting in it, but that will be installed. I can see he's still, oh, okay.
Well, it's a little bad.
But I agree with you. It is confusing a little bit.
You would think that we're putting a parking lot in there, that the lights were a good part of it.
They were, they, they would be, but the decision was made to, to attach them to the, to the jail cost. And then there's a sheet in there that says understanding contingencies, and frankly, it, it's just something for, for you to read over, because when you approve the gross maximum price, the, the construction engineers had a contingency in there that they can use for issues that may be needed. For example, if there's a delay and the price of product goes up or something like that is, is an example I can come up with. But it kind of explains some reasons why the, the design or the construction contingency is allowed, and then of course, owner contingency, if you understand that, that's just money set aside that when there's changes and things that we can draw on that to complete the project. It's similar with the construction contingency. But technically and legally, we have very little control over that construction contingency. And you'll see some of the construction contingencies down in the bottom of that format. There's two down there. They replaced the gross max, maximum price proposed laundry equipment with specialized equipment. And that was a case where the item, the, the design of the dryers, I believe, was, they were not being made anymore, so they had to switch to a different vendor to get the type of dryer, and that cost an additional nine thousand dollars. And then the building required additional review of forty thousand dollars that was out of the contractor's hands, and you'll see that down there that came out of the contractor's contingency. And that's your money, by the way, and what they don't use will come back to the county, so. And then the fourth thing I handed out, and I realize I'm kind of lengthy today, but after discussing this and, and the confusion I had in my own mind on Monday over these things, I thought it would be good to talk about it with you folks. And then the other sheet that I handed out is a schedule and where they're at on both projects. One, you'll see up on top, it says Clay County Jail, and the second page then says the Clay County Law Enforcement Center, and it shows the date and what the activities that are going on. They'll also be doing every Friday electronic update to you folks. And if you have questions or something, if you want to direct them to me or something, so that you don't establish a dialogue between the two, because that would be a violation of the open meetings. It's, this is just for information's sake, so we have to be a little sensitive to that, so. I, as you know, I had, last week, I couldn't talk at all, so, and the doctor had given me some instructions as to what to do, so I was out of the office about halftime. I really appreciate that opportunity to, to have the sick leave, so I could do that. I know it cuts into some of the work and things, but I feel that things are really peeled up, so I feel good about that. And then I have received a couple of feedback, that's just for your general information, in regards to the bidding process on our two projects. And the feedback I had received was why weren't the bids opened in, at the board meeting and for public review? And in fact, the one I explained to is the fact that the construction management at risk is the board reviews a guaranteed maximum price and then can approve or disapprove that. The construction firm's been very open, they supplemented a book to you with all of the bids in it, and, but no, the bids weren't open, they aren't required to be open. They're not required to take the low bid if in the professional opinion, and they can articulate why they don't take the low bid, they can take the next lowest bid because of some reasons on it. So, but I'm, I still have one to follow up on, get a little information and get back to them, but I just wanted you to be aware that I've gotten, received a little bit of feedback in regards to that process. So, Mr. Chair, that completes my report.
All right, very good. Anything else? All right, we have a groundbreaking ceremony at eleven, and we'll see you all there.